Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of Wednesday, October 23rd. Would you be kind enough to join me, please, in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Steve. If you'd be kind enough to zoom in on the big screen, we can just let folks know at home what we'll be discussing tonight. We do have two public hearings. One relates to local law B proposed of 2024. If you've been watching, we are entertaining and acting as a requirement, sewer district use law. And this is a continuation of a public hearing. And then we also have our budget hearing for preliminary budgets 2025. We'll be taking up those items as the meeting begins. We're also going to discuss forming new, the potential for forming new town water districts. Now that we're well on our way to creating a sewer district in the traditional neighborhood zones, we obviously will need to have central water go down to essentially all of the properties there. We also, at the request of the village, want to take a look at forming districts where they have service outside of their service area as a way to assist them in providing those services. And so we'll be looking, in particular, we have our engineer, Brandy Nelson, here to walk us through existing service areas and how we might approach forming one or more new water districts. We have, as we do every year, we award highway material bids to the lowest responsible bidders. We go out each year to get the best pricing for you. And we have all of that information thanks to our highway superintendent and our attorney to the town. We also have, we're going to award a bid for snow clearing of our sidewalk and parking lots here around Town Hall. We're going to set a public hearing on proposed local law C. If you've been following along this year in anticipation of changes initially by DEC for freshwater wetland regulations, we imposed a temporary moratorium so applicants would not come in with proposals, only to then find that the regulations had changed mid-application and that they were subject to new regulations. And so we are very close to, DEC is very close to finalizing those new regulations. And we have created or well on our way to creating the sewer district for the TND. And with the adoption tonight, if we do in fact adopt the sewer district use law, it would be appropriate to do what we said we were going to entertain at the beginning, which is to remove the moratorium as it relates to development within the TND CC now that there will be a requirement that any new development be, you know, hook up to that central sewer when it is created. So that is what local law C deals with. We will have a public hearing regarding an application for a waiver under that moratorium. And then we will get to our department committee and board reports as well as any other business. And we do anticipate going into attorney-client session. Okay, we have announcements. A lot of them are scary and many of them are orange. We would first like to let you know, and we have, as many of you already know, we have a compost at our transfer station. And you can now compost your pumpkin when you are finished with it. We would just like to point out to you that you can't paint your pumpkin. And we're going to compost it to make sure that everything in there is wholesome. Okay, speaking of pumpkins, the Red Hook Library Friday, October 25th at 4:00, Second Annual Halloween Extravaganza. There you will have face painting. So instead of painting your pumpkins, your faces can be painted as the 25th. Who's good at Spanish? The Ademuer face. That wasn't too bad. Saturday, November 2nd, rain date, November 3rd. It is Day of the Dead. It is happening once again. It is a joint effort from the Red Hook Community Center. And let's see, it is Cultivar is doing it with the community farm. There it is. Cultivar is, as you probably know now, on Cookingham East on the property owned by Party Boots. We would like to, once again each year, let you know that the Art Foundation, in concert with Community Action and United Way and Hudson Valley Cash, they're looking for volunteers, as they do each year, to assist those with preparing their taxes. These are some of the positions that they're looking for. And you can reach out to Lynda Eddy at Duchess of Community Action, DuchessCap.org. And again, in disclosure, I am this year the government representative on the board of Duchess Community Action. Every year, the Rotary honors the Citizen of the Year. This year, they nominated and are honoring Todd Baywright. And that is this Saturday. And you still can get tickets. Just go to Zefi.com for sponsorship opportunities and ticket information. And that is 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Community Center. Tickets are $75. The Lodge has a pork loin November 2nd, 3:00 to 6:00 p.m.
I think there's one more Halloween event, the ability to be having our Halloween parade this Saturday at 1:00.
Okay, very good. I would like to wait for one more announcement. You probably received in your mail today, in your mailbox, my full newsletter, which mentions some of the projects and lots of other information, but also details the voting locations and the early voting dates and times. I'd like to once again encourage you to take advantage of that. We have only had that opportunity for the last few years. And in the letter I point out, in '22, we did try to encourage folks during the congressional election to take advantage of those nine days. Many did, but many did not. And we did have, at one point in time, a two-hour wait on election night at the high school. So if you would like to avoid that, save yourself time and certainly help others, especially those who may have difficulty standing up and waiting in line for two hours. There are lots of options for where you can vote and when you can vote. The closest to us is at Brookmead off of Route 308. And early voting starts on Saturday, this Saturday, October 26th. Thank you. Okay, we're a few minutes late, but could we start with our first public hearing, please? Deanna, would you be kind enough to read the notice?
Notice of Public Hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a continued public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on October 23rd, 2024, at 7:35 p.m. local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on a proposed modified local law number B-1 proposed of 2024 entitled "A Local Law Enacting a New Chapter 110 Entitled Sewers." The proposed local law enacts a new chapter 110 of the Town Code to provide for efficient, economic, environmentally safe, and legal operation of the Town of Red Hook Sewer District Number 1 Sewer District Collection System to comply with applicable requirements of the intermunicipal agreement with the Village of Red Hook for discharge to the Village's treatment plant and to enact regulations regarding wastewater disposal to protect the health and safety of the Town of Red Hook. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the Town Board. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated October 8th, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Is there a member of the public who would like to speak on this topic? Okay, we did receive comments a while back from the village and very helpful. As you know, this is an effort that is in collaboration with Red Hook Village. It will be sharing, the system will be sharing their package plan. And so we want to make sure that our regulations are consistent with theirs. And so we did get, we did get that input from, why don't we reference the comments we got and the feedback? We got responses from DEC. I think we referenced a lot of this previously. Chris, anything to add?
No, I think we talked about it pretty comprehensively at the last meeting. But we haven't made any further changes since that draft, the B1 draft.
All right, folks. At this time, I think that we might as well entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Shall we? William?
I think I motion.
That's very good. Second. Julia?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Okay, we still have a few minutes to get to our second public hearing. So why don't we dispense with local law number two? Number two. We have resolution number 99. No, I've got, authorizing the adoption by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook of local law B1 proposed, which is now local law two. Chris? Local law two. Chris?
So, Mr. Chairman, what we'll see is the resolution itself speaks to the adoption of local law B proposed. And in the text of the resolution, it says that the board adopts local law B1 entitled "Local Act Enacting a New Chapter 110 Entitled Sewers" as local law number two.
Exactly.
Right. Because they're not members, and so...
Till they are adopted.
Well, actually, technically, I put the quick files then, but we don't have anything else then.
True. Resolution number 99 dated October 23rd, authorizing the adoption by the Town Board of local law B1 proposed regarding sewers. Who would like to make that motion?
I've been waiting five years to make that motion.
Have you really? You need to get out there and have more fun. Okay, second.
Oh, thank you.
Julia, thank you very much. All in favor? Jacob?
Hi.
Myself? Hi. Folks, for those of you who believe that your local government over-regulates, that's the second local law, and it's already the end of October. So just keep that in mind.
You want to talk about the third one?
What's that? Want to talk about the third one?
We'll get to the third one.
Okay, 7:50. I think, I think this is fine since I see, who's in the audience? Why don't we jump right on in? We can do our second public hearing later. Why don't we, why don't we do water district? Can we do that? You are right, Brandy. We can let you get out of here at a reasonable hour. Of course, the only problem with that is I now have to scroll 75 pages in order to get to our thing. So as I mentioned earlier, the town is desiring, and the village as well, to create new water districts, proper administration of existing services. And so why don't we start with what exactly that means? All right, there's the task order, Time Bond has prepared. And here we go. Shall we start with this map, Brandy?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, I'm Brandy Nelson, and I'm an engineer with Time Bond. I'm the town designated engineer. And as the supervisor mentioned, as you all know, you've been working to implement the TND and make it more effective to have development in that corridor. And so we've gone ahead with the sewer district coordination in discussion with the village and sort of keeping in the spirit of understanding that some of that development needs sewer and water. The village has asked us to take a look at, and we're doing so in cooperation with the village and the town, to take a look at areas in the town that are currently served by village water. So there are a number of areas on the, let's see, currently on the east, south, and west side of the town where village water extends to properties that are in the town. And so what we are proposing to do, I mean, it's sort of a two-step process. The first step is to complete a preliminary engineering report that basically assesses the asset that is in the town and serving town residents. And we'll do that in a format that is consistent with what EFC and the State Department of Health require. That way, it's there as a building block for the town if we ever need to pursue any funds for upgrades or anything. We've got that as a basis in our system. What that will do is we want to understand the details of what's there in terms of how many residents are served, what type of residence, or what type of properties are served, commercial properties, residential properties, and when the infrastructure was installed for those various service areas. And then we would probably also be looking at the areas that are in the TND that are not yet served, but it may make sense to serve them at some point in the future. And once we have that preliminary engineering report together, it will include information on the total R consumption of those areas. It'll include information on the age and cost of infrastructure. We're not going to be proposing to extend any new infrastructure, so we're not going to look at scenarios where we're serving different regions of the town with the exception of areas of the TND that are not currently served. And then we will put together a recommendation on district or districts to form based on the characteristics. And typically, we try and group like with like in terms of district formation. We'll come back to this board, present that information. And then the next step would be similar to what we did with sewer, where we prepare a map plan and report. And that's a formalized process. The state lays out a format where we map out the new district service area and show it in a plan and prepare the report in a format to describe those service areas. And then we can use that to develop a new water district or districts.
Very good. And so we'll also look at the potential for how many districts? You'll give us a recommendation about that.
We'll do that in the preliminary engineering report. I don't know at this point what that might look like. It will be one or more.
One or more.
And I think if you want to scroll to the second map, it's a little bit clearer to see where parcels outside of the village. So the village's service area is inside the black boundary in the dark blue. The parcels are shaded in dark blue. The lighter blue are the town parcels that are served by water. You can see sort of a strange geographic distribution.
Oh, now I just would like to note that the tradition area is actually already a county-created district.
That's correct. Yeah, that's a good point. So we will, we will be excluding tradition. They're already governed under Duchess County Water and Water Authority.
But the section of TND residential on the east side of the zone that live for 200 units, that would be incorporated in your...
We'll look at that as part of the preliminary engineering. Yeah, so like what's in the TND that also may want to be. And then we've got the TMVCC, portions of that are not served. And then portions of the TNDOI, I can never remember which correction it is.
East.
South.
East of nine.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, no, wait. It's like OI, I, oh, I care.
Oh, it's OI. Office industrial.
Brandy, will the report opine on, well, first of all, I guess I don't entirely understand what might be proposed in terms of the actual source of water for the new district, whether it would be switched over from village source water to town source water? And if additional draw on town water is anticipated, will the report opine about capacity? And whether, you know, I know you're not proposing any infrastructure in terms of mains and things, but whether the existing facilities are...
Part of what we need to look at with the preliminary engineering report is what is the existing capacity and what's available. And we will be working off of materials that Delaware Engineering has put together for the village in relationship to some recent upgrades to their storage and pumping system. We, at this point, we were not anticipating doing any kind of analysis on the town's water district one in terms of, you know, its service area. It's been operating sort of separate and distinct. And even though there is an intermunicipal connection for emergency purposes, that has not, you know, it doesn't regularly provide water to the village service area.
So the formation of the new district would be more of an administrative change rather than a change in source?
Yes, with the exception of the considerations that we'll have for the portions of the TND that are not already served. So what we'll do is we'll make, based on information the village provides us, we'll make an estimate as to what the additional flow might be. And that will give us the town the ability to sort of look forward and decide if that can be served by the village or if they would, if they ever move forward to serve those areas, if they would need to look into source water creation.
Is there ever a scenario where we would reach out to DCWWA and see if they were interested in merging their water district into ours? Would we look to see if there would be any benefit for either the users or the district as a whole?
That's a good question. I had not thought of that at all. And maybe it's worth a call to the county water authority to see if that's something they want to contemplate?
Okay.
Yeah.
Possible. So we'll have to look at all those arrangements because there's existing agreements and so on and so forth. This can be a little bit more complicated.
It's a little bit complicated because this is a very, it's a hybrid approach that's been taken thus far.
Some of it's already in place.
Some of it's in place, and they're not proposing new upgrades. So that, to your point, Julia, is administrative. We're just forming a district around the parcels being served. And some of it is served by the village but managed by the water authority. Some of it is not served at all but may wish to be served in the future. And like I said, we'll probably leave the town water district one out for now. We may take in the information from the engineering report and decide it makes sense to talk about the town water district one just from like an operation and maintenance standpoint and sort of economies of scale of operations. But I think we'll probably stick with the scope we've got outlined in our proposal. And then if we need to change it by incorporating water district one, we can.
We also have new infrastructure, relatively new infrastructure and older infrastructure.
Yes. Yeah, that'd be something we'll want to get a handle on. I have not ever seen specific information about how old the infrastructure is in different service areas.
Very same with us, yeah. You did prepare a task order.
Do you like a verbal resolution? I have one if you would like. Because this was an addition, so...
Oh, yes, I think... Did Cassie prepare one?
Yes, but I don't think that it was distributed.
It made it here, so we would love a, or a resolution, which would be number 100, I think.
And I'll send it to, I'll send it to you. Resolution approving task order for Time Bond for Engineering Services, whereas the Town of Red Hook and Time Bond have entered into an agreement for professional services dated this January 2021, copies of which are unfiled with the Town Clerk. And whereas pursuant to the agreement, Time Bond has provided a task order for engineering services for the town in connection with the preparation of a map plan report for a proposed water district. Brandy, is it characterized as a map plan report?
It's two steps. It's a preliminary engineering report and a map plan report.
With two separate maps.
Right. So maybe I would say preliminary, preparation of a preliminary engineering report and a map plan report for a proposed town water district. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Town Board of Town of Red Hook that the acceptance and execution of the supervisor of the task order not to exceed the lump sum amount of $18,600?
That's for the engineering...
I'm sorry, and for the preliminary engineering report and not to exceed lump sum amount of $11,500 for the map plan report is hereby approved. That would be the resolution.
Lost that. And this task order is available in the packet and has been. Well, time is of the essence because we want water to catch up to sewer. So it's all in place for the traditional neighborhood district and whatever we can do to assist the village in delivering that service. We have plenty of opportunity in the TND now once the infrastructure is able to be tapped in. That's my punt for today. I'd like to go ahead and make the motion. We approve resolution 100 as articulated by the attorney to the town. Is there a second on water?
Second.
I didn't know you were going to go second. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Jacob?
Hi.
All right, terrific. Well, we're not that late for our second public hearing. Brandy?
I think. May I be excused?
Not if you're going to be that nice about it. Have a safe job.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we'll be in touch.
Enjoy what's left of summer, next hour or two.
Twelve more hours.
Yeah. Careful, Bill Kimball's right behind you. Okay. Our second public hearing. Deanna, would you be kind enough to read the notice, please?
Notice of Public Hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, on Wednesday, October 23rd at 7:55 p.m. local time to hear all interested persons on a preliminary budget for the 2025 calendar year for the Town of Red Hook. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard at said hearing. The public is encouraged to submit written comments by email to TownClerk@RedHookNY.gov or by mail to Town Clerk or by dropping off, dropping a copy in the town's drop box at 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York for receipt in advance of the hearing by 4:00 p.m. the day of the hearing. Please note preliminary budget 2025. All comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Please take further notice that copies of said preliminary budget are available for inspection by any interested party during the Town Clerk's office hours by appointment only, Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Town Hall, Red Hook, New York, and on the town's website, RedHookNY.gov. The compensation to be paid to the following officers is as follows. Supervisor: $62,478. Town Board Member Each: $10,065. Town Clerk: $64,700. Town clerk, $64,718. Town justices each, $20,700. Highway superintendent, $76,006. By order of the town board of the town of Red Hook dated October 16th, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to speak on this matter?
I would like to.
Okay, Deanna, go go right ahead and we do receive your written correspondence as well. Please, please do both, yeah.
Okay, I was going to refer to that.
Okay.
I was just going to say that it is in the packet. I can read it or I can just let it be.
Whatever you would prefer to do, yeah.
Okay. Well, I would like to read the the one, yeah, this one. Dear Supervisor McKeon and Town Board Members, as the Town Clerk and non-voting member of the board, I would ask you to consider my following request. First, I would like to thank you for full-time status for the deputy town clerk position. Alex is doing an incredible job and is dedicated to the office of the town clerk and has assisted me in keeping the office running professionally and smoothly. The work generated by the town board meetings has increased over the past few years. This work is always time-sensitive and takes precedence over any other office responsibilities. The work required after meetings needs focus, organization, and attention to detail. This increase in workload isn't something that is planned or predictable. Since our office serves the public first and foremost, a lot of this work can't be done during office hours. I stay after hours most days to complete what I can't, what can't be done while the window is open. I'm asking for an increase of 20% on all four of my salary lines. I believe this is adequate compensation for the number of hours I have worked over the average workday, seven hours. Most days, I do not take a lunch. I'm also asking for an increase of 20% for all deputy town clerk salary lines. To clarify, the salary for tax collector has been adjusted on the 2025 preliminary town budget to $14,115. I'm asking for 20% on that amount. These requests are reasonable and well-deserved. My deputy and I cannot afford to live in Red Hook due to the increase in the cost of living, and we are required to. Thank you for your serious considering, consideration of my requests. It is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Deanna, I appreciate it. And just as a reminder for the folks at home, when you see a budget that we produce, it is just that, just a budget. It doesn't correlate exactly at that moment to expenditures that are authorized. It's just for budget purposes. The primary goal of budgeting each year is to determine the amount of taxes that we need to levy in order to pay for the services that we deliver. And so we have with us our wonderful bookkeeper, Anne Conway, to help us through essentially a presentation that I'll walk you through on the 2025 preliminary budget. If there are any questions, Deanna, so.
I'll just jump in on a non-budget-related issue. Randy, just let me know that there's a green BMW SUV in the parking lot that has the back hatch open, so if that belongs to anybody, you might want to go close it.
Okay. Green?
Is it like definitely green? Could it be black?
It could be, I don't know.
We'll do the really important part now.
We're in good shape.
You're in good shape. It was just a case of, did I leave the stove on or not?
Yeah.
The burner?
Yeah.
We've all been there, no worries. Very good. So I'll try to run through this if you've been watching over the years, budget presentations. You'll see that this is something that I add on to each year. So if you look at a slide and say, gee, I think I've seen that before, you're not imagining things. The 2025 preliminary budget reflects some changes at the budget workshop, but is mostly in concert with the tentative budget that was first presented and put out there. So let's hit a couple of highlights, shall we? We, you know, you hear me talk often about fiscal risk. You know, folks often ask us, how are you doing all these projects? Where is the money coming from? And oh, my God, there's gonna, you know, something's gonna come to roost. Well, according to the New York State Comptroller's Office in 2020, in their 2023 fiscal risk analysis, the town of Red Hook had a perfect 0% chance of falling into fiscal stress. It's, we've been very close to a perfect score for many years, but this is the first time that I remember we were at zero. The preliminary budget continues nine years of lowering the tax rate by approximately three to 4% to offset increase in residential assessments. The state requires us to trend, to move assessments according to market values if we are going to have an equalization rate of 100%. The household impacts, so this is what's different for those of you writing in the audience. This is the first time in nine years a budget is being presented where the average residential taxpayer will actually pay a tiny bit more than they did last year. In all other years, it's been less or flat. And we're going to show you how, even though there is in this proposal an increase of just $7 more for the average or the median household in Red Hook, how that is still well below the actual taxes that that household paid all the way back in 2016. Fund balance, the fund balances and credit rating remain strong. We were once again reaffirmed by Standard and Poor's this year in 2024. Their upgrading of our rating to double A back in 2016. Projects continue. I think we're on something like 80, 81, 82 capital projects, at least during my time here with you all. We don't do this on our own. There's not one person, there's not the town board that accomplishes these things. We rely on our partners. They need the other governments, they need the organizations, land trusts and so on and so forth. And we certainly don't have the money to pull off much of what we do without the assistance of these financial partners. These are some of the grant amounts that we have received over time that we've been able to to leverage. So why are we able to keep taxes lower? Because we have reorganized for efficiency here in town government. That's, and still able to deliver services, in fact, increased services over time. One of the first things we did was refinance early our series of debt, which provided savings. We are very proud of the fact that not only are we a leader in clean energy because of the reduction in emissions, but the savings that it's providing to us to have transitioned away from some of the fossil fuels that, for example, used to heat this building and the solar generation that we have from the community's solar farm. One of the best things we did was buy our streetlights from Central Hudson. Thank you very much, Public Service Commission, for allowing us to have that authority. We are at the point where next year in 2025, the acquisition and the replacement to LEDs will be all paid off. And so we'll start to see real savings from that, not only in our general budget, but also for those who have lighting districts. There are small letters and small numbers here. This is the fiscal report, stress report, that is issued by the Comptroller's Office. Again, that's available on their website and our website. Essentially, what it says is there are, there is a zero next to all of those categories on the fiscal stress. So folks always say, oh, great, my assessment went up, that means my taxes are going to go up. Well, what we've been doing over the years is lowering the tax rate as those assessments go up. So here's the line chart. Thank you, Faith. It shows that the, what's called the mill rate, the tax rate, that's the number, the numbers on the left, the orange line, and as it's progressed over time from 2016, would help if I move the chart up, to 2025, projected in the preliminary budget, you will see that we have moved from 2.3 something all the way down to essentially 1.5 on the mill rate as property values have increased. So this is sort of if you're a homeowner in this community, this is sort of the chart you would like to see. Your perhaps single largest investment is going up, and the cost from the town tax standpoint has not gone up because the tax rate has been moving down over time. So here's, we want to show you back in 2016, here's an actual property and a property tax bill. We want to show you how, this is the taxes, $674 for all the town services that we provide for that property. That's in 2016. Over time, you see how the rate has gone down. That same property in 2024 went from $674 paying to just paying $626. So again, when we talk about adding $7 to that number, which is what it would be for the 2025, that'd be 633. Here we are back in 2016, 674. So if folks want to know what your town taxes that you're actually paying, they've gone down over time, and here's the chart of that. And we put in there the 2025 at the end, a little bump up. So why, why this year? I'll get to other potential cost reductions. Why this year? In a nutshell, interest rates. Mortgage tax, sorry, mortgage tax revenue was much lower than we anticipated for 2024. The Federal Reserve was supposed to lower interest rates early in 2024, according to almost all of the pundits, which would then stimulate real estate sales, loosen up some inventory, get folks buying properties with mortgages. And of course, they didn't get around to lowering, lowering interest rates until just back in September, last month. Now, the reality is, is that interest rates actually were moving down in anticipation of a Federal Reserve cut, but folks don't really necessarily follow, aren't as wonkish as some of us are. And so they haven't really, it hasn't spurred the kind of transactions that we thought it might. It's picking up a little bit. Again, we don't have a crystal ball, but suffice it to say, what we have seen is lower transactions with mortgages. So that means more cash sales are going on in the community. And obviously, you've heard me speak of this before, the golden handcuff syndrome, if you will. Many folks are in a house right now with a 3% or less mortgage. They are not about to give that up and move to another home, even if it's smaller and cheaper, because the actual monthly payment won't be if they have to borrow it six or six and change on the mortgage. So that is why this year we're going to be more conservative with our revenue forecast than we thought we might have otherwise been and entertain a little bump up, the $7 bump up in the average town tax bill. So we'll be up at $633 for the household, median household, but that's not necessarily what the impact of what we do here is for folks. Some folks are able to realize greater savings because of some of the services we now offer for free. You no longer need to pay, for example, to access your public facilities, transfer station. We are, as of 2023, based upon the energy pricing that was in the open markets back then. And if you joined our community solar farm in 2019, when that that went live, you were saving 800 and something dollars a year. So the town was taxing you 600 and something, but you were saving 800 and something. You were actually netting out to be better than zero because of some of the opportunities that you had here in town. If you're a family and you're sending your kid to our summer camp, you would then try to figure out what are you saving by having a family here in Red Hook and getting that free summer camp? We offer that for five or six weeks each summer, one, two, three children. We've had reports of people moving here simply because that was one of the benefits that we offer here. We have trash saving. We do offer our garbage, while it's not as cheap as it was in the past, it still is a tremendous value when you take it to the transfer station. So over time, from 2016 to 2025, that's the change in the tax rate from 2.34% to the mill rate. That's how many dollars per 1,000? It's $2.34 for 1,000 in assessed value. And it's gone down to 1.50, we'll round it up to 1.51 in this budget. These are the various tax rates on the taxing entities. This is 2024, because we don't yet have the finalized numbers coming out of some of the other taxing authorities. The county, I think, is doing their presentation next week on their budgets. So we like to show you the pie chart because people are always surprised when we tell them that we've been lowering their taxes. This is the pie these days as of last year. The tax burden in the town of Red Hook, 81% school district. And the town, which is this gray area here, 6%, and that says 2024. And there have been propositions that have been approved on the school district last year and even last night, right? One in three were approved. So I wouldn't be surprised if these percentages even skew a little bit larger with that. So we work hard to keep the taxes down, but we're, you know, we're not delusional. We know we only account for 6% and there's only so much impact we can have, but we do what we can to to maintain these levels. Lots of investments. I'm not going to, you know, go through all of these slides, but we'll focus on some of the more recent ones. The Cooking Ham Farm Trails, you now, you know, are now open. Quite the reason we're able to do all this is we have a lot of different pots of money that we can tap into. We have our CPF, which has been wildly successful in both acquiring open space for recreational purposes and protecting the farms throughout our community. And we couldn't, we couldn't do half of what we've been doing lately without those different funding sources. Incentive zoning fund is an important tool as well to acquire the lands for the workforce affordable housing. We heard about that tonight, how it's difficult to afford to live in Red Hook. So here's Cooking Ham. We're well on our way to realizing this vision quickly. As you know, there's funding that's been allocated. We talked about water and sewer to bring, for the roads and water and sewer through the Mid Hudson Momentum Fund, and we're grateful to the governor for creating these funding sources so that we can, in fact, continue to build. Trails, more trails. We're going to have to already amend our trail map. And when the trails are set through the Bard College properties, we'll probably go ahead and reissue that. St. Margaret's, we've all been looking at St. Margaret's from the outside. On the inside, it was, ceilings were falling down, literally. The place was butchered, if you will, on the inside. We have done a ton of work, including replacing HVAC systems and a lot of finishing up on exterior, but interior, it's really going to look wonderful. I'll give you a little sneak peek here, just to whet your whistle, if you will. This is a place that, you know, could have been deemed uninhabitable just a few years ago. And you see some of the architectural details that exist, the floors that were just in horrible shape and painted, and the plaster walls were fortunate that we have employees here. We're fortunate that we have employees here with extraordinary talent as it relates to plaster. Okay, so there's Repco's initial design concepts for Cooking Ham Farm. These are many of the project work to connector. If you received the letter, you know we're very close now to having the connection to go from one village to another. Once we get that bridge to Red Park, imagine we'll be just about ready. The nine G crossing, being the other thing. The Salt Hill Trails, the bridges and broad boardwalks that are being built, if they're not finished already. Dog Park, we've talked about making more improvements to the Dog Park and seeing if we can make that amenity something that works for, for folks. More clean energy stuff over the years. I won't go over all of that. Suffice it to say, all of those projects, importantly, we talk about how are we able to save money? Well, because we've done all those high-impact actions, we're receiving hundreds of thousands of dollars from the state's Clean Energy Communities Program because we are attaining point levels. And if you heard us last week or last meeting, we've applied for a one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar level to, to grant application to apply to the construction of the Cooking Ham Solar. Now that we've received the interconnection estimate, which is, which is reasonable, it's now known to us that it'll be financially viable to construct that. Investment in employees and equipment. We're going to be talking about new highway equipment with the potential to approve that because there's money in a budget line. For the highway department, suffice it to say, say, when I started about nine years ago, much of the equipment was old, aging, and needed to be replaced. And we're making significant progress with that as well. New, new things we talk about, services, the town funds, the programs. In the community center for folks of all ages, important programs, people with different needs and abilities. And in this budget, there's an increase for the community center so that they can continue to do their important work. Sidewalk and crosswalks are older projects that we've completed, recreation. Why do we spend so much money on recreation and trails and so on and so forth? Because it's the great equalizer. If we can have a community that folks of all income levels can enjoy and exist without having to pay to play, if you will, and we still have some of those issues here. In the town of Red Hook, you cannot access the Hudson River unless you are a member. You cannot access the Red Hook Pool with the exception of a few days a year unless you are a member. We need to address those issues because we do not want to be the type of community where folks are kept from these assets that belong to all of us. The Hudson River belongs to all of us. Recreation facilities, again, continuing. We have done improvements to all of the buildings. We purchased land to expand. Red Park West, we've got more to do there. There's a comprehensive plan there that is designed to incorporate someday soccer fields or multi-purpose fields, or tangular fields, I should say, so that different sports can be played over on that side as well. So we'll be looking for infrastructure money there to get utilities over there as well. Some of the things that we've added that didn't exist, pickleball. I never thought in my life that we would make so many people happy doing certain things. Pickleball and shredding are the two biggest surprises for me, but the pickleball craze has made people crazy. So we, we may have to look at expanding time. And I'm happy to report that it looks like we're awaiting approval, that we will have continued winter views of the now dormant Eddie Parker facility. We have an agreement to the end of the year, and they're now reviewing our request for 2025 as well, and maybe even expanding that year to be more than just three days, but five days a week. Resiliency. This is all about trying to protect the community against financial risks. You've heard me talk about a lot of these studies that were very specific to Red Hook and what might happen should there be a changing climate. All of the things that they have predicted have turned out to be true, the scale of which and the timing of which unfortunately is even more accelerated than the predictions in those local studies. We are, unfortunately, thanks to the help from DCT, Duchess County Transportation Council, we're helping with facilitating additional funding for the Salt Hill Bridge. And so that project is going to be moving forward. Again, why it's so important that we collaborate with our partners because we need their help in so many ways. Clean energy infrastructure, we've spoken about. Website, we transformed the website, so important that we are able to deliver the information. When people sign up, they can find out what we're talking about. Safety, or as you know, you've been following in 2024, the town allocated quarter of a million dollars of our ARPA money towards the Tidley Firehouse Expansion Project. And there will be, it was sort of a quasi shoveling happening on that project. We've provided increased funding for the VFW programs that do great work for us. We inherited, whether we wanted it or not, the Red Church Cemetery. And I think all would agree that our staff has done a wonderful job taking over that facility and maintaining it. We've listed a lot of the projects over the years. I don't know that it's 100% complete, but if you'd like to take a look at the list. Here's my budget message. I think it just simply goes on to talk about some of the things that I've highlighted. And take a, a read of that. And then the budget itself, the different funds. If you're not familiar with municipal budgets, there are different pools that we can tap in expenses. The A Fund, which applies to all of the residents, including those in the village. And then the B Fund, or GB Funds, which applies for outside of the villages. And I think we have summarized the impact. I'd just like to highlight, I think I mentioned the shortfall from A revenue. So why don't I go to that to show you for the folks at home? Here it is. I'll highlight that. State aid mortgage tax. We had budgeted two ninety, thinking again that interest rates would have been lowered and let's burn some more mortgage tax revenue. We only have our first six-month contribution in, but we have a good sense of what the next six months will be. It's not on a calendar basis. It's in April through March a year. But we think that that number will not only not be two ninety for 2024, we think it'll be close to one ninety-something for the total for the year. So that's why we budgeted lower than two ninety for 2025. We have seen activity pick up, but not to the degree that we feel confident going back up to more normal activity. We're still seeing some freeze in the real estate market as it relates to finance transactions. Sales tax, a good sense from the county. Counties throughout New York State are budgeting. Some are anticipating a slight decline in 2025. Typically, they're budgeting for next year between one and two and a half percent, according to our county exec and the office of finance there, the county. We're thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of one to one and a half percent for the folks at home. Whether we generate a lot of sales tax here in Red Hook makes no matter, if you will, to our budget. It's all a percentage, two point nine percent of what the local share is of the county's sales tax, if that matters. So it's how the county as a whole does with sales tax revenue that indicates what ours will be. We have a budget proposed to, for six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Could be a little conservative. We'll see. The quarters have been tracking around a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and ninety. The first quarter tends to be a little slower, however. So that's the budget. That's the budget presentation. Thank you very much for being so patient about all of that. Here's some of the more wonkish part of the presentation. Let me go back to, as part of the budget, we will pull twenty-seven thousand dollars down, or at least anticipate to need to use a reserve fund. As you know, the comptroller has been sort of after us, if you will, to try to keep our reserves between certain levels. We, we may have a disagreement there. The comptroller doesn't have to run local municipalities. And I'm sure all of you know you want to keep as, as, you know, much rainy day money as you can if you have unanticipated expenses. And so we are going to pull twenty-seven thousand. We anticipate closing the year with over a million dollars in A Fund fund balance. Okay, here are the changes in amounts to be raised by the levy. This is not a great copy. I'll just blow it up. It's fifty-seven thousand. I, I will note that the only increase is in the A Fund because that is where the mortgage tax revenue occurs, is in the A Fund. So the B and D and the DB funds, there are no increases. Well, for GB, there's a small increase, but it's, it's really the A Fund and the revenue shortfall that is causing that. So you'll see that whether or not you're a village resident or a tax resident, the proposal is for a seven-dollar increase next year in your tax bill for that median household. And here is that mill rate I think I referred to. It's one of the lowest in Duchess County, one point five zero. What we did in order to show you the impact is that last year, we utilized three ninety-five, which is the county's median. The town of Red Hook trended six percent last year, so we took six percent and added to three ninety-five. And so use the four eighteen seven hundred in order to do the calculation so we could show you apples to apples, if that makes sense. Six percent increase on the assessment. And so that is what we did, is we chose a property as the example that is assessed at four eighteen seven hundred, or was assessed at three ninety-five last year. So the total impact is seven dollars, whether you live in the village, nothing more by living in the town. So a seven-dollar increase for both. And here's the tax cap calculation. Because we never had to raise taxes in the, at least in the nine years I've been here, we have lots of leftover that you can draw from the tax cap provisions. It allows you to add one and a half percent from your carryover each year. We, which would give you, all other things being equal, the ability to raise by three and a half percent. And so what we have proposed here is an increase. Just to show you some of the numbers, allowable levy growth, it takes into account pilots. With the carryover, we could levy two point eight nine three. What we are looking for is two point eight seven four. So we're not utilizing all that we can in order to raise taxes underneath the cap calculation. So it's... Now, one of the things that I think for the folks to note at home is, not only because of trending of home valuations, because of the growth in the community, your role goes up, not only because values go up, but also new construction and so on and so forth. You probably know this if you're familiar with Red Hook, but right now, we're going through quite a growth spurt. In fact, probably the largest and fastest growth spurt that has occurred in the township since the post-Ibm era, back in the sixties, when some of the residential neighborhoods were created. We do have a single-family chart, and maybe I'll put that up on the website to show you just how much growth is going on. At the same time, we continue to preserve our important open space that is representative of the two words, smart growth. Occasionally, people forget there's a second word in there. They just want us to preserve all of the open spaces. So we're trying to do exactly that. The point I was talking about with the tax base, you can see the growth in the role valuation at a hundred percent from 2019 to 2023 is one six six four. The, the role is at one point eight billion now for 2024. So it's continuing to grow because of organic growth and change in valuations as well. We have authority to borrow in order to do these projects. One of the things that we should be most proud of is we've done all these projects and actually have less debt than when we started out. We have the authority to borrow as much as ninety-four and a half million dollars as a municipality. Our outstanding debt that is not exempt is three million seven hundred and sixty-two. So less than four percent of our borrowing capacity we utilize now. This is important should we ever need to borrow in order to do an important project and then figure out how to pay for it down the line. So thank you for your patience, as always, to walk through it. But I always feel it's worth it to, at least one night a year, to give you sort of the overall view on how your money, because it is your money, is being spent here. And hopefully, you think that we are being wise about it. And if you don't, please let us know. That is the 2025 preliminary budget. Questions, comments? Chance for me to stop talking?
I'll just make one quick comment.
Sure.
I'm a member of the Solar Farm.
New Solar Farm, yes.
And moving from Washington E-City, also, energy costs go way down as a result of that. And I'm really excited that we are going to continue and expand that for more residents in the town as a, as a way to bring the cost of living down for more people. I think it's an important thing to do, and I'm just, I'm proud that we do it.
Right? Do you have anything, no?
No, it's good.
All good? Jacob?
Thanks for your work, guys. Thanks for your work.
And Tom Roy deserves much, much of the credit.
The number cruncher.
Okay, I think we still have an open public hearing, if I'm not mistaken. Why don't we entertain closing the public hearing? Who would like to make that motion?
Come on.
Well, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Jacob?
Hi.
Myself. Okay, any further thoughts? Shall we? Motion to adopt. That is final. Before we go ahead and do that, and in theory, it has to go right to the computer. Before we go ahead and do that, Anne, in theory, has to go run to the computer and check to see that we're under the tax cap. Something that she knows the answer to before she ever does it.
That's right. And I did it before the meeting. So I know we're under the tax cap by eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
Very good. At this time, would somebody like to make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-five preliminary budget as proposed to be the adopted budget for twenty twenty-five? Would somebody?
Oh.
Going once?
Alma.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Julia. All in favor? Jacob? Thank you very much and folks, thank you. Um, and thank you for the use of your funds in order to do these important services. Okay, and Conway, thank you very much.
I'm excused.
You're excused, too. You'll take a right and head north.
I will be heading north. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks very much. We appreciate it. Okay, uh, moving right along, shall we? We uh need to get back to the exciting world of highway materials and a warning bid for that.
Were you able to access the full um spreadsheet in an email?
The full spreadsheet on materials in an email? I'd be amazed at what I can do with email.
Should I just forward it again?
You did.
It's right at the top. Cause I'm not sure the whole thing got its way into here.
Into the?
In terms of, it's hard to print an Excel spreadsheet and I think that didn't really make it.
Something went off the edges, then?
I think so, yeah.
Cause all of a sudden, only, only a spreadsheet that went off the edges, right?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, don't, don't look at my screen if you would, please. So I can have the privacy.
For the first one, yep.
Let's try to.
Just that one.
Oh, we'll see if we can access that. Does it want to? There we go.
All right, so you can you click over to, well, so you're gonna start with hot mix, I guess, or stone ice, either one, and then go to materials down at the bottom.
Well, hot mix is the first one. Why don't we do that? Folks, again, just to remind you, in order to get the best pricing, we put things out to public sealed bids. We compare those bids, make sure they're apples to apples. And um, then we award accordingly. And so what we've got here for hot mix, sounds like a band from the nineties, right?
We're gonna shuffle around some.
Who is that? You don't know who that is either, do you?
Two bids on each of, uh, each of the sets of materials here.
Okay.
And so Teresa, just refresh your repulsion, prepares an adjustment to equalize
Yes.
uh, the price to pick up at the plant with her staff. And the, so the staff time and the number of miles and so forth are taken into account in a, in a formula that she's consistently applied for each of them so that she can appear, compare apples and apples. But the price that you'll see in the contract would be the free onboard uh price, in other words, at their plant, okay?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good, good. Um, so we have, well, I went to hot mix and I probably should have stayed on.
Oh, well. This is an old one.
One oh one. Dated October twenty-third, authorizing the purchase of hot mix asphalt for highway partner purposes. They were opened, the bids uh on the twenty-seventh of September. Bids being received from Caloruso and Sun and from Callanin Industries in the pitch adulation. And so what we have is um the highway superintendent's determined. Uh, the bid of Caloruso and Sun is the lowest responsible bid for item one, dense base of fifty-six fifty. Item three, dense binder of sixty fifty. Item five, sham at eighty-two fifty. Item six, F top half coat at sixty-eight. And item seven, F top quarter armor of seventy fifty is set forth on such bid tabulation based on the DOT index price of six twenty-one per ton for hot mix asphalt as of September twenty twenty-four. And I believe these prices are down from, you know, recent highs. Okay, now therefore be resolved. Who would like to resolve it?
So moved.
Thank you, Jacob. Uh, is there a second to approve resolution one oh one?
Second.
Thank you, Julia. All in favor? Aye. From Hot Mess to?
Snow and ice?
Ice, ice, vanilla ice, ice control abrasive. Uh, resolution one oh two, dated October twenty-third. Uh, Red Wing Properties is the lowest responsible bid at eleven and a half per, dollars per ton FOP. And ISO move one oh two, moving along.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Still counts if you approve, I think. We have materials, a lot of them. There's a whole list. I'll blow it up for those of you at home. Wanna see who bid on which ones and who was successful. Um, suffice it to say, we have Grasso out of Montgomery for many of the items. And one uh from Bloomingburg or several, Dangrav gravel, so on and so forth. And uh, materials and services, topsoil, these various bids, East Kingston and Hudson. So our resolution, which is now one oh three. Bill. We'll get them. It's a, dated October twenty-third, various highway materials and services for twenty twenty-five. A whole long list, um, successful bids from RKB Materials, Caloruso and Sun, Callanin and Industries. And Red Wing Properties, the various prices of the items are listed in the resolution. Now therefore be resolved that we accept these bids and award these bids and ISO move one oh three. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is why we sometimes recommend that if you have a problem with insomnia, watch certain parts of our meeting. It's been worked as we've, I don't think it's supposed to work for the council people, but, but, but good to know though. Uh, okay, we're moving along. Uh, we've got next up is.
Motion to do.
Yes, no, we've gotta do, no, sorry.
Snow clearing, I'm sorry.
Snow clearing the sidewalks. Um, we had uh one bid from Frank Osper. It's uh that we are, um, it's almost a mirror image of last year's on the various uh costs of the snow from six thousand feet of sidewalk. Um, uh, with or without uh twelve inches or more of snow. Deice that sidewalk here or Town Hall recycling and uh deice that as well. The various pricing for that is in the packet. Packet. Okay. All right, um. So who would like to make a motion to approve award the bid for snow clearing to Frank Osper against Suns? Don't all jump in.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next up, we have one application for hardship waiver uh that is on property in Echo Valley Road. Establishing the public hearing for that. I imagine this will be pretty easy for us. It's something that is almost three hundred feet outside of, but not quite. Um, so we have a resolution one, oh, well, we can do a resolution on that snow clearing, right? That was a motion or is that a resolution?
Need a motion?
So let's, let's do one oh four here, dated October twenty-third. Establishing a date for a public hearing regarding an application for a waiver on the local law number one. It's a construction of a pool house uh approximately two hundred and ninety-two feet away from the wetlands. Let's set it for our next meeting, shall we? Um, I hope this is quick for seven thirty-five. Yeah?
Twelve. Shall we cut it? Yes.
Yes, please.
The eleventh is Monday.
No, I don't.
Uh, and ISO move, is there a second?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
We will get our usual engineer letter.
We, we, we will, we shall. We've got it. Oh, uh, I moved and I think I moved and Jacob seconded and I have. All in favor on that one?
Great, okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. There we go, that's our, okay.
Do we have it? Now we have it.
Yes, so let's do our public law. Let's jump over. Thank you, Bill. So as we mentioned earlier, uh, we had uh said that if we could uh remove the moratorium on one or more of those three parts, um, that we would uh do so now that we've adopted the sewer district use. So our people are required to connect into the central sewer. Um, projects can now move forward. Uh, once uh local law proposed C, which would be number three if adopted of twenty twenty-four, this local law would allow those projects to move forward, would remove the moratorium on that area. Also allow on the other two areas, wetlands, now that we have a very good handle, maybe not a hundred percent finalized, um, on what the uh new regulations will be. Um, we will endeavor, won't we, attorney to the town? We will endeavor to modify our code so that it reflects um that applications will obviously need to comply with the state's D, new D E C regulations. Uh, but what locals, local law C does is actually allow the applications now to proceed forward uh for review with final approval um uh being possible after twelve thirty-one uh twenty-four. So that they will be subject to these new regulations. And so again, as a reminder, we didn't want applicants to be caught in the middle between old and new regulations. And so they can now go ahead and move forward now that they should have a good sense of the wetlands. Um, we'll also be putting forth at the November meeting, uh, hopefully a draft will address um the, the issue as it relates to density in the ABD. Um, when we enacted this moratorium, we spoke about the need to protect the farmlands and how we had all these tools, um, including, you know, some language in our zoning to help. But it's still allowed um lots of houses on our larger farms and they were being put up for sale. And so, uh, you know, having uh major subdivisions on our farms is not consistent with our comprehensive plan. It's not consistent with the goals and objectives of the majority of our community, overwhelming amount of our community. And um, so what we are going to uh look to do is lower the possible density on those farmlands to allow them uh to continue as farms, but also allow some flexibility so that there can be future generations, so on and so forth. But not be attractive targets or candidates for developers. That is not consistent with our comprehensive plan. So we will be looking to put forward uh at our first November meeting, a draft that will also address um that and looking to get some feedback from the community and from our farmers um on what they think about lowering the possible density on unprotected farmlands. You know, as it relates to that, um, how many subdivision, uh, how many lots per, per acre? Uh, back in the day, uh, when Centers and Greenspace was passed as a compromise, um, uh, f- uh, farm property owners were allowed to subdivide one per ten acres, regardless of how many environmental constraints. And what we've seen is that it didn't always work out very well because properties that had lots of environmental constraints actually got lots of development potential, you know, as they wouldn't have had even when the zoning was three acre zone because those constraints were removed. And certainly, you know, we talked about use examples of Quirik Farm, which is a wonderful farm in the community that everybody feels very strongly about, um, you know, having that uh continue. Um, it's the heart of the town and so on and so forth. Well, there's four hundred acres there, so forty houses can be constructed on Quirik Farm. And I'm not sure that that's consistent up, you know, A, with our comprehensive plan and certainly consistent with the goals and wishes of our, our community. So as we see some of these farms, um, uh, the Hudson Valley Sheep and Wool on, on uh, um, the ants uh being a good example, come up for sale and thinking, wow, that's two hundred and something acres. Twenty, twenty houses or twenty-one houses can be constructed on that farm. Obviously, it really challenges the farm and whether it's viable in the future if you have that many neighbors and so on and so forth. So I'm being long-winded and I apologize, but just, you know, explaining and telegraphing, um, you know, to the public that, you know, that is yet to come and something that we know we need to tackle before the end of the year. Um, but suffice it to say, you know, do, do be mindful if you are intending to buy one of our farms that we are contemplating a change intensity and have been since we uh proposed this moratorium on unprotected farmlands in particular. Not to further constrain those that are under reason and, and already have, you know, very limited development potential. Okay, so that's local law C. Shall we propose to have a public hearing? I think the first one will be rather quick, maybe seven forty-five on the twelfth. Who's gonna move? One oh five?
I'll move.
Thank you. At seven forty-five on November twelfth. Uh, I'll second that, Jacob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, we are at?
That's the exciting part of that.
It all depends on how you deliver it.
They still make that up.
I just, you know, uh, it's unfortunate Christine wasn't able to join us. On the other hand, we are, uh, we can move through quickly that recreation report that is always so extensive and so lengthy. And we really, we're so appreciative of all the work that they've done. Um, which brings me to, if you wouldn't mind, before we get started. So, you know, we have our rec commission, we have our rec staff. They've been doing work on the cemetery because we inherited a cemetery. They've been doing. They've been doing work on the St. Mark's, uh, facility uh, because we needed to continue that work. And it's also a passion of mine, Kim, and so on and so forth. What we really have is operating now as a DPW without them officially being a DPW. So what I'd like to suggest is that
It's Department of Public Works for
Oh, I, well, I think those, that's an acronym most people know. But thank you for, for, um, clarifying that, Department of Public Works. So I think that's something that we should really look into establishing a Department of Public Works because it's, uh, you know, more, more accurate to say that that's what's going on now. We've got all these public facilities and we want to make, especially, you don't know necessarily will be operating the water district or the sewer district. That'll be, you know, a separate contractor doing the work there. But, you know, uh, given that we've become sort of an op de plus, if you will, with all of these various responsibilities, that makes more sense, I think, to have a Department of Public Works. So let's look into that. Let's get that ball rolling, shall, shall we? And, um, Chris, we'll, we'll look to you to see, uh, make sure any, uh, you know, changes we'll need to, to make administratively, okay?
Just skip to this one.
Oh, I'm, I'm not skipping over anything, do you like? I'm enjoying the possibility of not talking. I never thought I'd get to the point where I wanted me to stop talking. Bill, would you do the police report, please?
Sure, for September, uh, the police department responded to one hundred and fourteen calls in the town in the area of Tibbly where they now provide police services. Uh, there were eighteen tickets and they made one arrest. I would say that the report itself is rather self-explanatory about the various calls. I will remind the public, when you get to page four of the number of medical emergencies, they almost always are the first responder when someone calls nine one one about, you know, maybe they can grab me a heart attack or whatever it is. And so it's important for the public to remember that the police do all kinds of different services for the public and, um, you know, that's one of the things that they're busiest with.
And we do have an increase in our now adopted budget.
Yep.
Again, once again, it's a budget. It's not an approval for that expenditure, but it is a budget line and it's increased therefore. The services that the village police provide to us. Okay, uh, building and zoning. More numbers.
All right. So it's on the leaves.
Okay.
Uh, for October, which is still not quite over, uh, they have issued forty-one permits, which is busy considering we're at the end of the sewer, the building season. Excuse me?
Management guy.
Oh, yeah, it's been fantastic. Um, they conducted a hundred and seventeen inspections. They're still very busy in that department and issued thirty-six. Certificates of occupancy or certificates of completion. No complaints, uh, this month so far. And they generated twelve thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars in revenue from the permitting activities and, um, not just permitting, but it's also when they do a certificate of occupancy, close out a permit.
And I always like this picture that's like way at the head of the report that shows, you know, the vast majority of the evidence coming from the residential building.
That, that's right. Just how, just how busy and active we've been. You know, so they are very busy.
Um, and one of the things we did her, we did hear when we were contemplating moratorium in order to make sure our zoning and regulations were in concert with our comprehensive plan and new regulations coming out from D E C is that the enactment of the moratorium, even though it was only a certain amount of months, um, would slow down, um, development, uh, in our community. And I think, you know, this month, previous month, uh, it, it's just anything but at this point. They're continuing to work to, to keep up with all of the um, building that's going on in our community. So there's the
And that list goes into detail of all the different activities and their locations.
It's a night of charts. We don't want Julia's chart not to get the kind of airtime it deserves. Steve, if you'd be kind enough to okay. All right, uh, Jacob, would you be kind enough to give us the highway department report?
And, um, we have a request, uh, on utilizing a budget line for purchase of acquisition of two pieces of equipment.
We do, yes. So, um, Teresa's report is basically entirely focused on that. So, um, recently, the highway department has suggested or requested funding to replace a forklift and a wood chipper, um, both of which are pretty old. The forklift is forty-seven years old, non-reparable. The wood chipper is eighteen years old and currently shared with town of Mylan. At the budget workshop last week, um, we discussed these purchases and acknowledged that there was money in the heavy equipment line, um, in budget, a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that had not been used yet. She's attached quotes for a forklift and a wood chipper. Um, the total cost of equipment is a hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred thirteen eighty-two cents. So the lead time for those is three months for the wood chipper and one month for the forklift. We have purchase orders for those here, um, so it passes along to everybody else that already signed them. Um, and then we can get this equipment ordered. So, um, I think it's exciting to get some equipment to, um, you know, the highway, highway department continue doing the great work they're doing. Uh, Teresa, thanks for the consideration. All right, nicely.
All right, well, you know my question's gonna be.
When you need to ride the forklift?
No.
Can you give him the electric one?
Is it an electric one? Because electric ones are becoming very popular. So it's a bobcat?
Chipper is intimidator.
No, the forklift is a bobcat, the twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, that's right. Um, one, one question I had on that is I don't see in the, in the Westchester tractor quote, I see Sourcewell called out as the source of the quote. Did I don't see that in your paperwork for the, um, for the bobcat? And I, but her covered letter seems to say that came from Sourcewell. Do you, do you know? And was
No, I just, I know, and, and I guess we should have asked that to hang on, but
So I think there are, and the two purchasers, there's Sourcewell and
Oh, I see that in the Westchester one, right?
Yeah, so
It's not clear it was sourced there.
So
And I'm not saying it wasn't, I'm just saying I don't have the paperwork for that.
For the chipper?
Uh, for the, uh,
For the bobcat.
That's the forklift.
So there's, there is an email
Is that what this cover email is? There's just nothing in the email. Maybe that's what this is. It's got the same date on it.
So, and if you want to see what's in the purchase order, there's there's a contact email in the back of that one.
In this? Oh, I
For the purchase order.
I don't have that. Can I see that?
Yep. It's should be the last.
That's the chipper. Is the intimidator.
So are we suggesting that we ask Teresa to investigate electric options? Or are we ready for questions first?
No. Wait, should My opinion is we should find out if there's an election, an electric option. There's a lead time, I'm sorry, for the forklift, it's three months?
I think that's what it said, yeah. The, uh, the wood chipper's three months, the forklift is a month.
Forklift is a month, yeah.
And that's the one that's the order piece of equipment.
I mean, I'd, I'd be okay in approving the chipper, but I think I'd like to find out about the forklift options. I know, um,
They're pretty popular, I've seen electric ones used.
I'm gonna see grant funding for it, too, I think.
Yeah, and I would just say that, you know, like, I own a cold storage facility and he's around, one of these switched from one to the other and they've seen it work really well. Clean, lean, um, but again, I'm not an expert, so I wanna just, just caution that.
I mean, I can see that she pulled it there.
I mean, I think we've reached that point in time where we really don't wanna be investing in gas, fossil fuel. I'll, I'll, I'll tell you right now, the transition to electric, you know, vehicles, um, we're, we're at a point where it's a little bit like with, you know, the BlackBerry. Who's gonna wanna go ahead and invest and buy a new BlackBerry when you know that everybody's going to be soon moving over to a cleaner, more reliable? I mean, think about it, um, she asked us to, you know, consider having a mechanic, you know, as part of the roster. Um, so obviously, you know, there's, there's that, um, responsibility. And so the more that we can do to promote not only a cleaner, but a more, uh, reliable, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with approving the chipper and then maybe just getting more information. Jacob, could we ask you to, as a liaison, to follow up on that?
Yep.
Are we okay, are we okay with that? Okay.
So, yeah, perhaps it's a time to consider making a town requirement that for large acquisitions of these types of things that at least, not that we wouldn't buy fossil fuel if that's the appropriate thing, but that at least there's an investigation of, is there an electric option? How much does it cost? How, how new or old, mature is that technology? Just for the, for the future. And then when, if someone comes back to the town board and says, we wanna buy this uh, piece of equipment and we believe it's fossil fuel because we did explore the other options.
It would save us the time in the back of our head.
Yeah, exactly. That, that was all I was thinking.
Well, I think Teresa, fairness to Teresa, she, I think she knows, I know, we're, we're interested in the electric options and everything, but we, we haven't made that clear.
And not just, yeah, and the other departments, people are buying mowers, you know.
Yep. And we did, uh, we did allocate that extra five thousand dollar grant award to an electric riding mower, commercial mower for, uh, our rec department slash maybe soon to be, uh, Department of Public Works. Okay, shall we? So what, what, what did we do? We were gonna give a motion on this, right?
Do we need a motion?
For the one.
For the one?
For the chipper.
Why don't we go ahead and entertain, shall we? I mean, they don't make electric. Chipper's good, I don't think so.
Don't know.
I don't think so. Ew.
It's been so long since they've been on the market.
Yeah, right. For a chipper.
For your residential lot you were gonna buy on.
That's big. Lot of trees.
He doesn't believe in this.
Yeah.
Buying them now, that's like a lot of chipmunks.
I think, do we wanna, do we wanna hold off? I don't just ask the question and then it's
I still don't wanna slow them down.
Cause there's a lot of chipping going on these days.
Yeah. Eight fast wood chippers of twenty twenty-four, gas and electric wood, you know.
We lost part two, I don't know who's calling it.
But the capacity that she's looking for is huge, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Four ton electric wood chipper. Um, yeah, we're talking Caterpillar or something, a lot, uh, for, uh, I don't know if they do, if, if we're at that point yet. I know we're getting close. Look, they have lots of electric payloaders and giant equipment now that they're doing these, these trucks. Do a motion? What do we think? Boy. Now that they have
I mean, I don't think, yeah. I think we could ask to investigate, I don't think there's that much lost.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay, so we're fine with, we're fine with the acquisition of the equipment.
Completely fine, yeah.
We just like to find out.
And, and, you know, we're ready to move quickly at the next
Okay, would you, would you play that, Jacob?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Of course, an acquisition of this kind of equipment is
It's not gonna happen that often, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Please help. Um, okay. Water.
So they submitted two, uh, reports. The water month meets every month, the third Thursday of every month, uh, to go over the status of the work operations. I did not make this the, uh, let's see, uh, September meeting, uh, but the numbers are all very consistently good from prior, uh, prior months. Um, and then I was at the one that we had last week, um, in which began, it's the same. And I also, uh, it was last week that the scuba diver went in to inspect our tank. We haven't got the report yet, uh, but we should have it, uh, by the next, by the next meeting.
Anything interesting in there?
You know, I haven't, I asked and we didn't hear anything. I'm, I'm a firm believer that trouble finds you, so, uh, the fact that they didn't call
Is a good sign.
It's a good sign.
There's no mermaid hanging out.
Um, and they're dealing with, this Kewa water issue has to do with the end of the line. Uh, and they're gonna be putting, you know, they, they just trying to get scheduled with, I believe it's Foster, uh, does the digging.
Okay. This is at London?
Yeah. So, I mean, it's gonna, it's getting done, it's just a matter of getting the, uh, the digger for the hydro. So that's about that.
Bill, I see we do, I, I know that the climate is changing, but we do our dead-end flushing in mid-November. It's not likely to be icy weather, but
Sometimes we do it in October.
Okay, I was wondering why we're doing it in November.
The reason this is gonna, this one's being, we actually do it in September and October, but the reason this one's being done November is because they wanna install, they call it a hydrant, but it doesn't look like a hydrant, it's much smaller. And that's at the very end of the line. And they need to install a new one at the end of London, which was, um, I think, it was like
By the car.
Yeah.
Little car.
Yeah, uh, where they were having occasional rainwater. And they know what it is and, um, they just, I, I, they have to get it installed in the mercy of getting a contractor to come and dig it up. And contractor knows, um, I think it's gonna be done if it hasn't already, but, you know, very soon. And then they'll flush, one time once, yeah.
And then they'll flush, okay. And then I see we're approaching the end of the year, the P F O S testing. So this is, this is new for us, right?
Yes, um, well, they actually, the P F O S and the P F O A have been a requirement. What's new for us is that because our water's so good and we always have zero, which is unusual, um, they've given us to be able to do it once a year as opposed to quarterly. And considering they're almost nine hundred dollars a test per well, uh, that's a, that's a nice savings for the town. Um, and they have to be done by the end of the year. And I believe they were scheduled, uh, for probably like, they had to do it towards the end of, as close to the end of the cycle as possible so that the time period that they calculate. So, um, but this is the schedule for the various kinds of tests. There's some that aren't, they're done every nine years, I think asbestos is every nine years. Um, radiological's every nine years. So, uh, but we, I think we're gonna have to think about budgetary wise now. Uh, cause normally we spend about a thousand dollars a year on the regular testing of the wells, which is regular for, you know, E. coli and all the other issues as well as copper and lead and those things. But now we're gonna have to be doing these, uh, both of those tests. I think they're, I think it was quoted with eight hundred sixty-four dollars per test per well. So it's gonna cost the town a little bit more money, um, in the future to do that.
And are they noticing anything? I mean, obviously, you all, you've been, you know, the we're in drought condition. Are they noticing any changes in the test results because of, you know, our water? No capture?
No, and it's unusual because our wells are shallow. They're, they're not real deep wells, but they're also over near the salt hills. So they're closer to the water source and they're closer to our aquifer.
Well, I was at a conference yesterday for the Hudson River Watershed Alliance and we had a presentation about groundwater and hydrogeology. And I learned that, uh, that it's actually quite rare for the types of droughts that we're seeing on these wells, to be short-aging to affect groundwater very significantly, surface water Surface water, yes, but groundwater...
Surface water.
True that, but I mean, boy, you go around and I look at ponds and...
Oh, yours is way down.
I can do this one, so if you have any...
This stopwatch.
We might have to reassign.
So our Recreation Department has, as usual, been busy, kind of tidying up the ends of the summer season, working on the paperwork for summer programs, currently caught up with mowing, although anticipating some work with leaves, continuing to groom the ball fields, lots of softball going on, over thirty-seven minutes softball league just concluded. There were several softball tournaments, which I actually saw when I was going through the park this weekend. Some anticipated tree planting coming up. You mentioned already the indoor pickleball opportunity for the winter, which I know people are excited about. Continuing to deal with ongoing maintenance of potential leaks in the snack bar and keeping the equipment functioning well. Let's see what else. Continuing to work on stone dust trap, which again, I think, to the point about the Public Works Department, I think that as we have more linear feet of trails that are covered with stone dust, they will inevitably require maintenance, and that's another project, another sort of line item in the budget that we need to make about. And I would say that we had late breaking news today, that we had a number of successful fledgings of bluebirds from our bluebird boxes in both Red Park West and the Flat River.
Looks like the softball tournament's a success there.
Yes.
Okay. Julia, was that your report for the Recreation or Hire? Who's gonna elect this?
To be fair, it was a kind of short one.
Who's gonna elect Christine now? Okay. Tree preservation, sir.
Yep, so last week's meeting, the main topic was discussion of the upcoming fall tree planting, so just a schedule of what the next steps are gonna be. You dig New York, we contact on November first, trees will be delivered on November sixth, then they'll be temporarily stored in the Highway Department facilities, thanks to the Highway Department for doing that, the Commission. Michelle Decker's going to plant the holes for the planting, or dig the holes for the planting on November eighth, trees will be planted on the eighth and the ninth, and there are gonna be ten trees planted at Red Park West and one on Fruitwood. So the tree preservation commission should, I hope, look forward to seeing them.
Very nice. All right, that's the correspondence we've had. We also have correspondence, thirty-day notice regarding an alcohol permit for Club Sandwich Tivoli LLC seventy-six Broadway, will you know? I'm not sure we're supposed to get this, are we?
I don't know, that doesn't make sense. The village should be given the opportunity. I mean, it's fine to notify you, but they should be given the opportunity to review it.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I would be hesitant to speak on this issue and defer to our villages as to whether they'd like to waive the thirty-day period on this. So, folks, let's, let's move to pass this on to Mayor Griffith in Tivoli and make sure that he did also receive a notice, and if not, he's done ours, so that he can be in touch with them, he would like to. This is Club Sandwich to Tivoli LLC.
That's the location, Baromo's on top of this place, was it?
Oh, okay. Baromo's, so we're getting more sandwiches? I thought we were supposed to move away from carts, we have a wonderful new deli here in Red, and now looks like sandwiches are going to Tivoli.
More sandwiches is fine, I know.
Yeah, I'm just, just gonna say.
As you might guess.
You, you're gonna, you're gonna write the brief in opposition, is that right, of the carts?
So do we need to take action on that, to refer?
I, I, I think we should waive the thirty-day notice because we don't necessarily think it applies to us, it's very nice that they're letting us know.
They did the rest of it in the town road.
Yeah, so are we all okay with waiving the thirty-day notice, but making sure that we respond to them and say, hey, make sure you've been, you know, communicating with the village of Tivoli? How would you, how would you advise me handling this?
You know, I'm not sure you wanna do a waiver.
No, not at this point. We'll just waive, we'll just, we'll just wait and see whether or not they've been in touch with Tivoli.
Right, refer to Tivoli and let them comment.
Yeah. Yeah, let's refer to this to Tivoli, we won't wait to do the thirty-day waiver, let's make sure that these folks have been in touch with village of Tivoli, shall we? An isimoe, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
There was a correspondence that was in the printed package, but not the...
Oh, yeah. In the printed, but not in the...
Yeah, I don't think it was in the digital one.
Is this one for the bench?
Yes.
Okay. So Debbie Frankel reached out to our offices, would like to put a bench in honor of her mother, who lived for very many years in the Jefferson, South Jefferson neighborhood there. We have a small piece of property there, press that's in, I'm not quite sure what it is, let me see, folks, if I can, if I can pull it up on the screen.
Do we have a bench policy?
Well, there, there goes my next question is, you know, it's, it's a wonderful thought that we wanna provide benching, people want to sponsor benches, but, you know, it would be helpful to have a bench policy so we know that we're, you know, like...
Being equitable with that?
Well, equitable and just making sure that the bench is representative of something that's acceptable for us, right? We don't wanna have a bench that's in honor of something that would offend people, for example. So I think it's important to, of course, to establish a policy, and then maybe get back to that, I think that's, you know, the appropriate way to, to go. We've been doing this in parks.
I know we've done it in parks, and, and as we know from the parks, and I've had this experience at prior organizations too, I mean, a memorial bench is a significant long-term commitment. You know, having a memorial bench in disrepair doesn't make them very happy, and so then you have to think about the keep and maintenance.
However, if it's, you know, if it's part of your parks, capital plan, have certain benches in certain places and, and you can ask for, you know, when, when people are interested in doing that, here's the place where we'd like to offer to have somebody, you know, sponsor that bench, and then that creates an opportunity for people, you know, to be able to do that within the context of your, your planning, right? Because people, people often wanna do this and, you know, you need benches, right?
Yeah.
Especially in your newer areas, some of your newer parks.
Well, here's where she wants to put the bench, though.
Where exactly is it?
Certainly, like, what does it want to do, like?
So where are you saying?
We're, we're on, we're on Jefferson Road.
Okay, so... Okay, can you use the map?
So, what's that?
And do we own that?
Well, I, I believe we do, but I, I do, I don't wanna swear to that, I mean, we should, because it's the roadways there.
Well, that's not necessarily a should, I mean, it's...
Well, that's why I chose the word should, yeah.
I mean, her office typically does show the property line around things like that on the opposite side of the road, but I don't know, it's starting to close from the roadway.
Oh, Chris is right, we would have to do a lot of investigation in there, and it lies the rub, is that we, you know, need to use resources, and...
Which house was the one that she looked in?
Well, I'm not sure I would point...
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm not sure that I was gonna point that out.
Okay. That's what I'm asking, proximity is like...
In the neighborhood.
But, but suffice it to say, she looked in the neighborhood and they thought it would be nice to put a bench here.
I think that's really nice.
Which kinda, kinda makes sense, and then you go for a walk, I don't know how long that walk is.
Right, people do walk that area quite a bit.
But it's a very lovely gesture.
So, I mean, it's not, you know, we would just have to look and see if we, you know, could determine easily, you know, either for Teresa's records or... Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't show up as a separately owned parcel and parcel access, that's all we can see, so maybe you own it, and we can ask Teresa if she knows whether, you know, if she piles snow there and that's part of...
This is my concern, is that when I look at the roadway there, is that the snow loads are going somewhere?
We can ask her, right?
We can ask her.
We can ask her if that's, if that's just an open space and if she piles it in the back, or if she, if she uses that to pile or whatever.
Or it seems like from the correspondence that they already asked Teresa, so I'd hope that she would acknowledge that if that were a concern. There's a chance she just said it wasn't her domain, but I would hope that she'd think about that as a part of the request.
Do you wanna forward that to me so I can look at the real estate issue for you? Or are you gonna consider it a little bit?
Shall, shall we do some investigation on it?
Do you have a standard bench? I know the village has a bench that they've been putting in here and there, and do you have one at the park?
We do.
Okay.
We do.
So you'd want it to be that model, presumably?
Yeah, uh, yes. Well, there they try to seek permanency perhaps more than we might, we'll say. I mean, if this is a bench that, we might have to tweak the exact spot if it's being used for plowing and so on and so forth.
Yeah, but usually you want it permanent.
Oh, yeah, we don't want it going anywhere.
Right. Okay.
All right, let's do a little investigation, thank you. To all the folks who wanna sponsor benches throughout our community. When I go to the great beyond, please do not have a bench in my name, I don't want people sitting on me. All right. Folks, thank you very much for joining us at this time. I'd like to make a motion that we go into attorney-client. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All in favor? Hi, good night, stay healthy. Exercise your voice, November fifth, or prep for December.